Begin our board meeting shortly. I will share with you, if there's anyone here interested in making public comment tonight, we have two public comments sections on our agenda. The first one is for public comment on board agenda items. And the second opportunity for commenting is on non-agenda items. If there's a matter you would like to speak on, you will need to fill out a public comment card located at the tables at the entry point. Please submit your card in the bins by the table there as well, and our board assistant will pick those up. Please complete the card in its entirety as well. And if you are a scholar here speaking to us tonight, please make sure you check that box as well. And are we all set? Okay. We welcome and appreciate your presence at this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education on November 7, 2022. We respectfully request that you turn off cellular phones and refrain from clapping, cheering, or making audible comments. We invite you to make public comments by filling out those cards we previously spoke of. And if we can call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Grant, if you would call the roll, please. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant, present. Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Mathias.
Present.
Ms. Shaki.
Here.
Dr. Baker and President Ross are excused. Mrs. Williams.
Present.
And we need to approve the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved. Support?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, wonderful. We will start with celebrations.
Good evening. We have a celebration of one of our own, Megan Pearson's. And Mr. Mel Atkins will come forward with Megan to say why we are honoring and celebrating her.
Good evening, Ms. Williams, Superintendent Robey, members of the board. Today, I would like to introduce you, probably not for the first time, but under a new recognition, Megan Persson's. Megan Persson's is the Enrollment Equity Coordinator for our district, but she's much more than that. She's a proud parent, advocate, coach, former but always a teacher, and one would I would describe, and I don't say this lightly, I think she bleeds GRPS. You know, saying a lot. Megan was recently recognized as a 2022 40 Under 40 recipient, award recipient. She uses her voice, position, and platform to advocate for equitable access to all GRPS scholars. In addition to her work in educational equity, Megan also co-founded and facilitates the LGBTQIA+ Advisory Committee for the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I would like to publicly congratulate Megan on a tremendous honor that is truly deserved. Same words.
Dr. Roby and the board, thank you so much for recognizing this publicly. I think I said this when I was recognized by the Grand Rapids Business Journal, too, but none of this work is possible without my scholars. To Mr. Atkins' point, I do bleed GRPS. I'm a proud alum, a proud colleague of his and of all of yours, and I thank you for letting me do the work that I do.
Thank you so much. And we will have the report from our scholar representative to the board. Mr. Leggett, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes. So we recently had a superintendent scholar advisory council meeting, October 25th. We got to tour Franklin Campus, so that was really fun. We also participated in a facilities master plan focus group. There are two groups, grades 11 and 12, and we just discussed ways that we feel we would like our school to be improved. The ICHS Feeding America Food Truck will be happening next week, Thursday, November 17th, so the JROTC every month hosts a Feeding America Food Truck. Recently, we had the Mosaic Film Experience at the Celebration Cinema Studio Park, so students throughout the district got to go through that. We met some pretty cool people. There were Emmy-winning producers there, an NBC correspondent, famous photographers. And we also got to meet the co-star in Black Adam Out Is Hodge, so that was fun. And then lastly, senior summit is coming up, so that'll be November 22 at the university.
Thank you very much. And then we have reached our first area for public comment with regards to board agenda items only. Ms. Grant, do we have anything?
No, I don't believe we have board agenda items.
Okay, nothing at this time. Report, secretary report.
All right. I just have a few updates for committee meeting schedules. The ad hoc facilities committee will meet Wednesday, November 16 at 4:00 p.m. here in the auditorium. Policy committee will meet Wednesday, November 16 as well, at 5:30 p.m. in room 101. And we also received an update today saying that Legislative Committee has been canceled.
Thank you very much. And committee chair updates, academic achievement, committee chair.
Yes, we had an academic achievement meeting last Wednesday. We did get an instructional council update. They had their first meeting of the year, and they were given a presentation from the SEL teams on two curriculum options, Caring School Community and Second Steps. They also were presented with a course for Innovation Central for their, part of their STEM Academy. It's a robotics and applied technology course that was presented and voted on to proceed with that course. There are two feeders into that program, the STEM Academy, and those are at Westwood Middle and Stocking Middle. They also established dates for the rest of their meetings for the year. And then we had a strategic plan update in regards to academics. Their focus is our theme four, which is enhance curriculum and programs opportunities. And Rodney Lewis spoke of an update on the Promise Zone, so we were updated that in 2020, 156 of our scholars took advantage of that program and enrolled in GRCC. And then in 2021, 242 scholars, so it's gone up quite a bit. And that's for up to 30 credits, basically, which is about $7,500 that our students are able to have for two years at GRCC. Mr. Armstrong gave an update on work-based learning, which is a partnership with local businesses, and gave us some of those local businesses, and they're working on growing that list of businesses. These work-based learning opportunities are linked to the student's educational development plan. They give them real-world experience. We asked a lot of questions in regards to this, and I think we're going to continue to get more details on how this program is going and how it's being grown. We asked how partnerships are created and just kind of clarifying some of that, how students find out about it, just some of the details. They can get up to 10 hours a week outside of school hours for work-based learning. It's pretty detailed. We do have teachers from our district that go out and observe them in the workplace and take notes and make sure that it's tying in with their schooling as well. And then we got into a little bit of the Zello program, which develops their educational development plan starting in seventh grade. Just a lot of robust conversation and questions from the board. Also, they get a half a credit for each semester that they do work-based learning. And there is, and then we had Dr. McGee come and talk about the six academies at Innovation Central. Three of those you get some certifications for. And there's an advisory board for each academy. At Innovation Central, there are counselors, two counselors, a college advisor and a career readiness coordinator. So when we were presented with that, we started a conversation about, is that applicable to all of the schools in the district? How are we growing that program? We were told that they're working to get college advisors in all of the schools through MCAN, which is the Michigan College Access Network. And I'm just really excited about how we're moving forward with all of this and trying to expand it and grow it and make sure that our students have more opportunities as we tie high school into career readiness and college readiness. So it was a great meeting.
Any questions?
Just one, a question on the workplace-based learning, which I think is exciting, the direction of moving there. And the question is, are there opportunities or was there any discussion about opportunities for paid internships for our students?
Yeah, we did ask about that, and we'd like to get, at one point, there were more opportunities for that, and it kind of got into a lull, and so there's talk about reintroducing that possibility and how we get that possibility out to the community, just kind of reimagining that for our scholars. So there is talk of it.
Good, thank you.
I know a thing or two about work-based learning as well, and so there's two formats in the model that are approved by MDE. One is an unpaid and one is a paid, so through work-based learning, they can definitely be paid. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All righty, then our finance committee.
Great, thank you. We had a finance committee meeting on October 24th. It was a light meeting, just a purchasing agenda and a bond update. So the purchasing agenda is on the agenda this evening, so happy to answer any specific questions about that. A few highlights would be our playground renovations that are going soon, especially Southwest Community Campus, was delighted to see that. And we had a quick bond update. The only project right now that is being worked on through the bond update is Innovation Central High School, and Phase One is nearing completion, so that component of the building will get turned back over to the school, and then we'll flip things around and start on Phase Two, so that's really exciting. If you've driven past Innovation Central lately, oh my goodness, it is gorgeous with those new windows, so I encourage you to look up in the sky if you're in that neighborhood because it's looking beautiful.
Questions or comments? All righty, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. And so I'm going to invite Stephanie Andrews, who is the president and CEO of GRPS Foundation, to come forward to give a report, a foundation report, and also some information related to our Turkey Trot. And Mr. Johnson as well. Okay. Ms. Chaney?
I'm excited to be here, Superintendent Robey and Board of Directors. Just wanted to share some quick updates. Last time I was here, our Foundation Future event hadn't happened. We're very excited that we were able to bring that event back in person. We were able to raise over $74,000 for scholars at GRPS. We had 312 attendees and 132 new donors, so I think that says a lot, that confidence in GRPS and people that want to be involved and help out our students. Just a reminder for our next big event, I think we sent calendar invites, but June 1st will be MindShare, and it will be happening at a public school near you, so location to be determined. I'm excited to share our end of Turkey Trot is sponsorship and fundraising for that, and so we're up over $71,000, $71,500 to be exact, which is over $20,000 increase over years past, so very excited for that as well. Also sharing, AT&amp;T is doing a sponsorship for our sports campaigns of $20,000 to help for our scholarship campaign, which brings me to our capital campaign, Building Champions. Very excited, we had some really great meetings, working with the facilities team, especially this week, and just moving those projects forward, so I'm delighted that those are starting to get some steam, and we're going to be spending those funds, and we'll see some updates at both Union and Ottawa Hills High School. And the last thing that I just want to kind of share is, one of the things that we're doing through the foundation, I've been there a year this December, is really reimagining how the work of the foundation is taking place. We've always been a request from GRPS to the foundation, and then we go out and raise the money, which in my estimation is a little backwards. I'd like to have some funds in the bank already to then already know actively, because in the reverse, so for example, because we have investments and other things, if those don't do well, we might not be able to meet all of the needs that are requested. And so I'm looking at a way, especially with maybe how funds are allocated the next couple of years, in a way that we can be more proactive instead of reactive, and so we're just being more fiscally responsible and also be able to do the most as we can for our students here at GRPS. So that is my side of the report.
Good evening, Vice President Williams and Dr. Roby and distinguished members of the board. It gives us pleasure to give you a quick update on Turkey Trot, and just to say, it's going well. We're getting ready to celebrate 30 years of Grand Rapids Public Schools Turkey Trot, and we go all the way back to 1992, where it started out at Riverside Park with about 40 or 50 runners there, and we have grown that race and that community event to over 4,600 individuals who participated in there. So we're looking to even go bigger and better than ever there. So registration is cracking 2,000 already, so we're a little ahead of schedule there, so getting excited about that. You all have your comp code, and so hopefully we'll see you there as well. The student, the school challenge is underway, where schools are competing to see who can gather the most paid registrations, and so we will be acknowledging and awarding that. The great shirt reveal may happen next week. You know, the color of the shirt is always, you know, kind of kept a mystery, and then when people see it, they really get excited, but I think you will be excited about seeing the shirt. We have a commemorative medal, a finisher medal, that every participant will receive, and it kind of matches the shirt, so you don't want to miss that. The public racing piece will pick up after tomorrow, you know what tomorrow is, so after that kind of settles down, we will get into rotation of doing more talk shows, more radio interviews, and those sort of things. So we're very excited about the foundation coming alongside of us and doing what they are doing in terms of raising over $75,000, excuse me, $70,000 before the race even starts. So, you know, we're really ahead of the game there. And so, you know, it all goes to support the kids after school and so that they don't have the pay-to-play situation there. So we want to thank you all for your support and doing this, and we're going to do it bigger and better each and every year, and so we're on the track to doing that, and so we're very pleased at where we are now. If I can give a quick shout-out to that shirt, T-shirt that Dr. Roby has. So we will bring the athletes before you in our fall accomplishments, but that shirt is about the cross-country state qualifiers. And so, let me tell you what happened at the state qualifiers. Ottawa Hills, Bennett Anderson captured first place in Division One Cross Country in the state of Michigan for high school. So we will bring him and as well as some of his teammates before you when we accomplish, I mean, when we recognize fall accomplishments. But keep in mind, Bennett Anderson, this past spring, as a junior, captured first-place state championship Division One for the two-mile, so in track and field, so that was his junior year, he entered his senior year and captured another first place there, and so we can only expect even greater things this coming spring there. So we're very pleased about that, and he has committed early to Syracuse University. They are very interested in having him there on their campus, and so I think he's excited about going there as well. So we'll be pleased to share with you all of the fall accomplishments from all the sports for Grand Rapids Public Schools students. Thank you.
All right, and so we are going to move towards our facilities master plan, and I will invite up Mr. Paul Wills from Plant Moran Crissa. And for our audience and our board members, this is an offshoot of our work related to our strategic plan, and it's, as we have worked through our strategic plan over the last year and a half, one of the components was how to be better stewards of district resources, and over the last four and a half months, we've been working very closely with community, staff, scholars, stakeholders, board members, internal staff, excuse me, internal stakeholders and external stakeholders, to collect both quantitative and qualitative data around what we want to do to continue to see our district grow healthier and stronger. And so what you'll see this evening is just an overview of that data that we've been collecting and some suggestions or recommendations related to those findings.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Roby, and good evening, board members. This, as Dr. Roby mentioned, is a continuation from the conversation we had in May at the work session relative to the facility master plan, which is just one component of the overall district strategic plan relative to educating the scholars of GRPS. Before we get started, I just want to say a quick thank you to the Board of Education, to Dr., or I'm sorry, President Ross and Trustee Shaki and the ad hoc, and again, US board members, taking your time to really dive into the facilities, the utilization, the operational costs. Dr. Roby, to you and to your team and the cabinet, thank you very much for your time. We've had weekly meetings on Thursdays, really to answer questions we heard from the town hall meetings, from the community surveys, from the scholars going forward. I also want to say thank you to Ms. Erica Curry, and these two are with us with Urban Curry Planning, really to kind of be the quarterback, really did a great job as we go through this presentation. And then lastly, without saying Sammy Leggett, you have a job if you want one, when you're ready to co-present with us at any given time. So with that further ado, again, the overview is just a real quick 2012 transformational background, just one or two slides on that, why is that important? Again, the 2022 Strategic Academic Plan and how this facility master plan ties into that. Then again, really getting into the findings, the community engagement piece, and then ultimately the recommendations. As Dr. Roby mentioned, this is a first reading. There's, we're not looking for any board actions this evening. It's really to allow the board to absorb the process from May, feel confident that leading into the ad hoc meetings and the board meeting and public hearings later this month with ultimately a December vote for this going forward. So a little bit on the 2012 transformational plan, we actually went back in time to the late 1990s, so roughly every 10 to 15 years, the district takes a look at its enrollment, takes a look at its facilities, takes a look at operational costs. Really, the 2012, what came out of that was the significant buildings were recommended for closure, programs realigned. At the end of the day, there's really three major phases to it. Obviously, closing, reinvesting the buildings was the first onset to that. Then obviously, there was a secondary redesign, which really focused on the high schools. And an offshoot to that was actually the bond program, which passed in 2015. That, about $110 million was allocated really towards the high schools, as Ms. Shaki mentioned some of the, you seen today with innovation, with the remaining of that being warm, save, dry, technology, et cetera. So that was kind of a recap of the 2012 transformational plan. So again, tough work has been done with previous administration and previous boards. Fast forward a little bit to the 2022 strategic plan. When we first met with Dr. Roby, we first came aboard, I think through her thought leadership, was, let's start with the academics, with scholar-focused, and really take a look at some strategic themes. And the ones that we really took out of here was, again, trying to enhance the curriculum and program opportunities. We know that buildings don't teach kids, it's teachers and parents and guardians and scholars themselves, and so again, how do you really cultivate that impact of that environment? We talked a little bit about, how do you get that culture of trust and collaboration, which we have some slides here on the insight. But one of the facility themes that came out of there is really a targeted range of roughly 75% for the academic utilization. Going back to the 2012, that target was actually 70%. So again, you see this theme of focus on academics with an eye on facilities going forward. So fast forward, again, after the May board retreat, we heard we want to hear from scholars. So again, there was a facility master plan working group. Obviously, we had regular board updates here through June, July, August, September, now here in October, November. But really, the goals is really threefold. One is to actually take a look at the strategic plan and highlight that, understand this facility master plan is actually two parts. So again, understanding what are the guardrails for this administration and this board, and ultimately, as you go into 2023 into the future, what does that look like? We wanted stakeholders to look at options relative to programming, and then more importantly, make sure that there's a continual engagement after the fact of this first phase of the facility master plan. So how did we do that? Again, kudos to the board, the administration team, the communications team, but there was community surveys, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, scholar surveys. Thanks again, Mr. Leggett, for your time and expertise. Lunch and learns, I think Dr. Roby went to no less than quite a few. We had a dozen town halls, we had robocalls, obviously mailers, so when you look at some of these results surveys, you're going to be very, very impressed, and I think very comforted knowing that you heard from a very diverse group from across the community as well as the survey going forward. So what does that look like? Right now, I had our marketing team kind of pull it, we have over 6,000 total respondents. So if you go back to the strategic plan, you had roughly 1,300. So that equates to roughly 3,900 scholar survey responses, and again, more importantly, the 2,100 community surveys combined is over that 6,000 mark. Again, on the left-hand side, you see the relationship, so we thought it was very important to hear from the alumni. So 3%, like, okay, Mr. Wills, well, 3% is a very small number, it's actually hundreds of individuals from the Alumni Association. You look at the staff, so I think Dr. Roby had principals' meetings that we presented with, there was teachers' presentations, so having their input, I was the parent component to that, community members, I'm glad to say 100% of the board participated in the survey, which is always a good goal to get forward. And on the right-hand side, one of the things is just the ethnicity of all the respondents. So again, a very good cross-section, which matches fairly closely to the district itself. So again, that was one of the major goals from the board's perspective that we heard from scholars and community, and we're to report that we think we've accomplished that going forward. So again, how did that results go forward? Again, we've had a chance to really analyze that, we could break it down by schools, we could break it down by cohorts, so if it's the middle school voice, it's the elementary school voice, high school voice going forward. So again, thank you to everybody that did take the communications as well as the scholar survey. So some of the results and feedback, again, these are just some high-level bullets that were pulled from the comments. We got over 187 different comments from various stakeholders, but be forthright and transparent. So again, you're going to see up on the district website, there's a facility master plan, presentations, not just from the board but town hall meetings. We had virtual town hall meetings, so if you were not able to attend in person, you can actually click and watch those videos. What we heard is renovate and improve existing school buildings before constructing new. So again, part of that facility master plan will be that second continuation of what does that look like? Again, the district does have a track record of renovating existing facilities. The second part of that answer was, if fiscally responsible, you may want to look at building a new facility. To give an example, if you have two neighboring schools, both are antiquated, maybe you combine those schools and you create a new 21st century school, just like the district did with Southwest Middle High School program. We heard from renovating existing performing arts, so don't go build a standalone 2,000-seat auditorium, take a look what you have, reinvest in that going forward. This was pretty strong across the board, is athletic fields, programs, tracks, and pools. So again, that's something that the district has assets, it does take capital dollars to support those capital needs. I'm sure you hear from Mr. Smart on a regular basis, hey, I need some money for the pool dehumidification, I need some money for the track. So again, how do you invest that? So again, investments across the district, make sure that's done equitably. Again, we can take a look at the previous bond as well as the future work being proposed in the tenure capital plan to make sure that the equity is across the district as we take a look. Vacant land. So again, one of the strong terms we heard was keep the land in GRPS's ownership, but look at partnerships, look at parks, look at potentially affordable housing or public housing relative to that. How can you get more roofs on these properties but still maintain that ownership? As you know, you own over 700 acres of land, only second to the city, so how can you use that as an asset and not as a detriment going forward? Looking at young fives and pre-kindergarten options, again, what's happening at the federal level, state level, is some of that funding, is how can you use some of these facilities for potentially expanding those programs? What to do with unused facilities? Again, priority one would be looking at community centers, again, that is an asset to the community itself, and again, the affordable housing piece. We talked about investing in teachers and staff. Again, you spend roughly $4 million of general fund money taking care of underutilized facilities, that money actually gets put back in the general fund to allow the district consider enhancements for programming and for staff going forward. Transportation is another one that we heard. Again, do you feel that you're safe? Do you take a bus? Do you walk? Do you take a car? Do you take a bike? So those are some of the things that came out loud and clear from the survey itself. And then lastly, just the Montessori size and programming. Again, taking a look at that model, does that work quadrantally? Does it work maybe consolidating or maybe expanding those programs? So just, these are some of the feedbacks that we've heard, and a continuation with that is, how do you take all this information relative to the communication? So the good news is, scholars like and love their teachers. That's what you like to hear from scholars and students going forward. They do prefer the smaller class sizes. I think the one thing I commend, Dr. Roby, the board is, is not to try to maximize the number of students in a classroom, but optimize, knowing that smaller class sizes- optimize, knowing that smaller class sizes enhance the learning environment. Again, looking at a K-5 or K-8 grade configuration. Right now, the district has kind of a variety of both. And so again, that's that second part of facility master plan. That second part of community input is what makes sense for the district? Is it to maintain the current K-5s, K-6s, 712s, or is there some other consideration going forward? At the end of the day, we talked about access improvement of conditions and accessibility to fields and gyms, things of that nature, also playgrounds. So again, I think the district's done a great job improving some of the playgrounds currently that are part of the bond, just a continuation of that, just for all the district's facilities going forward. Electives. This is what I always find interesting is what do the scholars and the children want? Number one, sewing and cooking classes, PE, gym and swimming, photography, art and drawing. So again, how do you take a look at some of those programmatic spaces in your current facilities going forward? Things that scholars would change? Food. I have three teenagers, and yes, I can imagine can't feed them enough. Phone policies. Again, that's more of an academic question, but how does that tie into facilities? Making sure there's enough bandwidth and Wi-Fi to potentially have those policies changed. Bathroom conditions. Again, fresh, clean, dry, et cetera. The other challenge I think the district has is when you look at your utilization, the lower utilization just causes more custodial maintenance issues because you're trying to maintain more square footage than is necessary going forward. Facility conditions, we'll talk a little bit about, but then also the heating, ventilation, air conditioning. So again, this is just some of the feedback and the scholars going forward. So then we get to the criteria. So oftentimes, if you take a look, people always ask, well, how do you decide which facilities could potentially be relocated, which programs, et cetera? So again, these are the top 10 that we look at. So again, there's industry best practices. Again, the district has a history of realining programs to facilities. But again, looking at scholar-focused, looking at the scholar outcomes, creating new and improved opportunities. So again, if you have a single math teacher in second grade, if you have three or four cohorts now at that grade level, that actually enhances that academic piece going forward. Investing in the spaces and environment to, again, strengthen teaching and learning. Again, that's that investment in the capital piece, creating warm, safe, dry, but more importantly, warm and inviting learning environments. Aligning with the strategic plan, this is key. So form should follow function. I think the strategic plan has a lot of great measurables. How can that facility master plan ultimately support that going forward? Positive financial impact, again, operating efficiencies, saving $4 million of general fund dollars, and also taking a look at an opportunity to take your existing teaching staff, because right now you have, I think, over 240-ish, maybe 250, 200, 200 teaching openings right now. So again, this is not about trying to save money by laying off people. This is really reorganizing the programs going forward. We've heard about the supporting the scholars, family and staff voice. I think the community survey and the scholar survey is very, very powerful because that gives you a great starting pad and great foundation of how to build on that going forward. Emphasizing safe, healthy and accessible buildings, again, is another aspect to that. And then ultimately, land use and prioritize ownerships of building. Those two right there, again, are kind of non-negotiable, where again, the district maintains control of the land, but looking at partnerships going forward. So this is just some of the criteria. It's not just, hey, what building has the least amount of students in it, or what's the oldest facility, or how much does it cost? So there's actually a matrix that, again, the board has taken a look at. It's adopted in relative to the facility master plan. Again, looking at some of those tools. So again, we've got the criteria, the tools to make the decision making is, again, looking at that 2022 strategic plan, looking at your academics, what makes sense from not just the cohort level, but also the quadrant and even the neighborhood level, listening to that stakeholder engagement. I think there's targeted roughly six continual community engagements after January to really help hone in on what this facility master plan ultimately looks like for Phase Two. I think back in May, we gave an idea. So right now, your elementary schools are roughly 53% utilized, and then the middle schools are roughly 48% utilized. Again, we know you have capacity. So again, looking at what programs make sense is trying to preserve those programs and put them in the right facilities and the right accessible facilities for both neighbors as well as the communities. Again, looking at the academic model, a great configuration. You have your tenure capital plan through that facility capital conditions assessment. Unfortunately, escalation of materials and labor still continues to be a challenge. So to give an idea, in 2018, when you did a roofing project, the roofing square footage was $20 a foot. It's now $40 a foot. So again, you have 4 million square feet. So again, this is just one of those enhancements to potentially lower your facility's needs going forward. We're going to talk a little bit about continuous utilization studies and role projections. Again, it's a year-by-year check of how do you really measurable relative to the outcomes. And so again, we just have some snippets from strategic plan that shows some of the priority outcomes and measurements, and we'll talk a little bit here of the tools going forward. So now we're getting to the recommendations. So again, first one is kind of the theme is impact. And again, when you say impact, it's a positive impact. So looking at consolidating GRPS facilities by relocating educational and support. So again, you have 4 million square feet, 700,000 of that is also non-- well, the support spaces, I'll call it the non-elementary, non-middle school. But really, providing environments that allow staff and scholars to excel, to really take a look at your alignment plan. So one of the things we're looking at is a continuation and confirmation that the strategic plan is correct. You should aim for 75% utilization at the elementary and middle school grade levels as a district, not by building, but by district. So right now, as I mentioned, you're at 53% and 48% respectfully for the elementary and middle schools. So again, people say, why 2032? Well, you can't just snap your fingers and shut down 20 buildings. That's probably not the best approach. As Dr. Roby said, the town hall meetings, this is really about enhancing the scholars and the community involvement. So this is a very strategic implementation, 75% at the elementary and middle school level as a district.
Not that we are shutting down 20 buildings.
Absolutely not. Trustee Green, yeah. So this, again, is, if you remember from May, someone says, if you just ran the straight math, what would it be? It was like 19 to 20 facilities. And the board was very consistent, like, that's not happening. But again, how do you get to 75% in a 10-year timeframe? And I think that's some of these recommendations kind of helped support the board today as well as future boards going forward. Recommendation two, again, is really to take a look at enrollment utilization on a yearly basis. Demographics change, enrollment changes, state funding changes, programs change. So at the end of the day, we're really taking a look at, as districts are coming out of COVID, kids are back, and scholars are back in their seats, teachers back in the classrooms. Ultimately, how does that look like by building, kind of by quadrant, by grade level, and ultimately by district? Again, this is almost one of those yearly checks of how's our fund balance? How's our enrollment? How's our facilitialization, et cetera? So again, just continues on an annual basis. Recommendation three is, again, relocating scholars and staff. That'll be implemented preserving programs, prioritizing access, improving learning environments to existing neighborhood and theme schools. So again, we're not naming schools. That's, that happens in Phase Two, which is the January through July timeframe. But really, how do we look at it from, should we be K-5? Should we be K-8? Should we be K-4? What should we do at the high school level? Should it stay 912? We have some that are 812 or 712. So again, taking a chance to let Dr. Roby, her administrative team and leadership team really come back to the board and say, based on these recommendations, here's the programs that could potentially be realigned, combined, to really preserve that, those learning environments for scholars and staff. Recommendation four is be responsive and transparent to the community. Again, we have a facility master plan calendar that shows not just through December, but ultimately what happens in January through June, July? What happens after August into November of 2023? Ultimately, what happens in '24 through 2032? So the community, the district really has a good understanding of how does this facility's master plan get rolled out, not just the next 12 months, but the next four years, five years, 10 years going forward. Recommendation, in terms of invest, this is something that we heard from the community, is the district has an opportunity for a potential millage proposal. Again, it would basically be reimagining what does these environments look like in a realigned program. Again, you have a $460 million plus capital need. We talked a little bit about at subsequent board meetings. So again, this is a continuation of the funding that was done in 2002, 2015, 2023, ultimately going forward, to really help implement the facility master plan. Recommendation four, I'm sorry, three, or I'm sorry, Phase Three is innovate. Collaborate with opportunities for the district. Again, taking a look at what do you do with those facilities that potentially come offline? We heard pretty loud and clear over 60% or close to 60% is parks, green space, affordable housing, really make it an asset. Another one we heard was 25% was staff housing. There's models across the country that we've shown that districts have a hard time attracting staff. Wouldn't it be great to offer potentially staff housing in the neighborhoods of the schools that they teach? The most important part of this is, again, prioritizing property ownership in perpetuity. So again, looking at partnerships, signing long-term leases to allow development going forward. And lastly, recommendation seven is really part of Phase Four. This is sustain. So again, you currently have vacant facilities. Right now, the recommendation would be to help reduce operating costs and resource inefficiencies, is taking a look at Kensington, which has been vacant, to level that and hold onto the property, but also look at divesting of Alexander from a partnership standpoint to see if there's other parties interested in potentially utilizing that facility to really help the community and help the neighborhood going forward. Again, the prioritization would be to maintain that ownership of that site going forward. So that right there is the seven recommendations. Again, these are more guardrails, again, with the specificity of 75% utilization at the elementary and middle school level as a district by 2023. I think the large part of that would again be that scholar voice we heard a little bit about. So the next part of the presentation to wrap it up is really how does, kind of what those next steps look like. So again, the academic overlay. Again, taking a look at what does it mean to educate our scholars at GRPS? Again, what research shows what's the preferred grade configurations, listening to scholars, listening to the community members and parents and staff, et cetera. Takes some time. So what you see up on the map is actually the current heat maps of your current K-5 scholars and your current 68. And overlay that is with facilities at both the elementary, middle and high school levels. So you start looking at what academic programs are nearby, so we don't have scholars and parents traveling clear across the district potentially for a program. The next step, once you kind of get your academics, so again, that form follows the function, is taking a look at existing themes and programs. Where are those facilities at? Again, looking at compatibility factors with that criteria we mentioned about. So again, not just the facility and operational lens, but that academic lens. We want to take a look at where are those existing neighborhood or theme schools, and what are the financial implications? So again, what capital need is there to potentially relocate a program to support that going forward? Ultimately, the goal would be to present names of these facilities with a timeline to the district going forward. Followed with the program consolidation plan would be the capital improvement plan. So again, you have a facilities condition assessment. This actually helps you determine how do you ultimately implement some of these academic changes and programmatic changes. So as I mentioned, in November '23, the district does have an opportunity for a no-millage increase proposal. It would provide approximately $258 million of a continuation of funding. Again, the last bond was really focused on the high schools. This would be more of the elementary and middle school grade levels. Taking a look at that, potentially a secondary millage rate. So if you heard, hey, we really want X, Y, and Z for athletics, we really want X, Y, and Z for maybe some additional programs that are not necessarily infrastructure. Again, you have an opportunity to potentially go out for an existing quarter mill or half mill going forward. In the event that the zero millage rate does not pass, you could reevaluate and reassess and look at a secondary vote in May of '24. If not successful by that time, the millage rate would have to drop based on accounting principles of having a one-year debt service. So the good news about GRPS and the city is, again, property values still remain high. So your tax values continue to go up. So again, this is just a great opportunity for the district to look at some capital investments to help support some of this facility master planning. So going into the timeline itself, so again, here in November, you're seeing the draft of the facility master plan. We have public input coming up here in November, ultimately with the FMP recommendations in December. Shortly thereafter, we'd have some visioning sessions with round-two stakeholders. Again, this is just input on academics. This is input on operations. Then spring summertime, you're going to have a finalizing of your capital plan with an overlay of that. On the right-hand side, you kind of see the, kind of the two cohorts kind of working together. So you have the educational, financial, operational approach. Ms. Rhonda Cribbs, your CFO, she likes to start budgeting, planning for the current fiscal year and the next fiscal year is sooner than later. So again, this just kind of helps that. Mr. Smart, from his standpoint, looking at the facilities piece, cannot help align some of that information going forward. And then lastly, spring, summer, you publicly name the schools to be aligned with that timeframe. So again, if a bond is successful in November, it could potentially get done quicker. If there is no bond, then obviously it may take longer, depending on ultimately what comes out of going forward. But the theme you're going to see throughout all this is this, the continuous stakeholder community conversations. We mentioned a little bit about the bond itself. So again, from the board member's perspective, August 12th is the submission deadline to put that to the clerk's office. Really, August, September, October, November would be the ballot information efforts that the district's done a very good job with in previous bonds. Again, fall, winter, you see stakeholder round four. Again, discussing those transitions. So I do commend the board of not making a quick decision to say, hey, we're having this all done by the fall of '23. We have several clients that unfortunately are in a financial issue where that has to be done. You're taking roughly a year and a half to really create that transition plan. And again, build off some of the successes of the previous transitional plans that the district's done over the last 10 or 15 years. Continuing to explore possible reuses for vacated facilities. Again, talk about the ownership piece. Obviously, November '23, a ballot proposal, vote. And again, just long-term, again, round five stakeholder in 2024, that'd be for the fall of '24 going forward. Again, transition process, you're still defining that, really December through June. I know we've had some principal meetings where they talk about some great ideas of how to invite, you know, new students and new scholars to their schools and have some pairings going forward. Architectural designs, again, a continuation of that, really like how to renovate facilities, who goes and what orders going forward. And then really just through 2023 through 2032, this is a continuation of facility master plan and really that continuation of the round table and the stakeholder input going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Roby and Trustee Williams. Again, if you're out in the audience, you're watching this on tape, there's a lot of great information at grps.org. And of course, you can always email at myschools@grps. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Roby and the board.
Thank you, Paul. Questions?
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll be back for the ad hoc board meeting in next week. And again, if any questions do come up, by all means, please submit them to Dr. Roby and her team and ourselves will get together and potentially ask any additional questions you may have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes superintendent reports.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have some action items, which is our purchasing agenda. Are there any questions about the purchasing agenda?
I'll motion for approval. Support.
All righty.
All right. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Dr. Baker and President Ross are excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
All righty. And then we have a consent agenda grouping. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
All right. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Dr. Baker and President Ross are excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes. All righty. And since we have approved that, we'll go down to discussion items. I have not received any announcement from President Ross, and we will go right into our public comment, including our union representative and non-agenda items only. So--
All right. I would like to start us off with a quick statement for public comment. If you have not completed a card but would like to give comment, please grab a card. Mr. Garcia can help you find them and we'll get those completed. We will call your name and ask you to join us. We'll call three names at a time. You guys can take a seat here, and then one by one, you'll have your opportunity for public comment. Unfortunately, during public comment, we are not able to respond, but we are listening, we're taking notes, and if we have follow-up questions, we will pass that to the appropriate staff member and we'll follow up with everyone. Your timer will be right here. Everyone has exactly three minutes. We have quite a large group who would like to provide public comment today. So we're absolutely not being rude, but we will have to stick to that three-minute limit. All right? Thank you. First, we have Richard Mack, Denise Kamuca, I am sorry if I did not pronounce that correctly, and Mike Moran.
If you would, again, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Please state your full name before providing your comment. Please state your full name before providing your comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time and provide you with a one-minute notice by flagging, well, we won't flag the red, a red card, but you'll be able to see that there. You will need to complete your comment time when notified by that. And again, because we have such a large group, we ask that you're respectful of that tonight. Thank you so much.
Very good. My name is Richard Mack. I am a civil rights attorney and I'm here to bring you some very disturbing information about a indirect relationship which the Grand Rapids School District appears to have with a company that has allowed some very racist, abhorrent behavior take place amongst its workforce. And I say indirect because Mr. Moran, who's also here working on this matter, will give you more of the specifics about the connection. But just very briefly, in the three minutes that I have, these, there are nine individuals employed by a company named United Electric Contractors. That's United Electric Contractors. And I have actually copies of the federal lawsuit that has been filed on their behalf. They complained about some of the most horrific things, the N-word being used weekly, near daily basis. One individual had to literally wear it on his hard hat for a week before they gave him a new one. Black and brown women being disrespected and treated. One of them was asked by a drunk white manager, can I pull your hair? Can I touch your hair? She said, no, of course. He got more drunk, yanked her hair, and then called her Raggedy Ann. Just some very, very horrific instances of racism. And and it's what's so describe, what's so disturbing is that, you know, oftentimes, when when government entities hear about these things, they'll say, well, there's a federal lawsuit going on, we'll just wait and see what happens in the federal courts. Well, the problem is that in in 20-plus years of civil rights work, I can tell you what happens is that the court system will resolve the matter for those nine individuals. All of them complained about this. All of them lost their jobs. So literally all of them, because they stood up and protested discrimination, were now without being able to provide for their families. But what happens is the court system provides for the nine of them. But those individuals are having us come here. Those individuals are more interested in making sure that the rest of the black and brown workers at United Electric Contractors don't have to go through this anymore. And because there's this indirect relationship that this company has with the Grand Rapids School District, we're asking and imploring you to please step up until the full extent that you can. Look at the contract that you have. I think the company's name is Moss Communications that does have a relationship with the Grand Rapids School District. And from what we understand, they're the ones that has the contract with United Electric. You can look at the contract, have your lawyers review the contract, and demand that this sort of institution either straightens up or ships out. That is unconscionable for into 2022 for us to be having black and brown workers work under the stigma of such denigrating racism on a day-to-day basis. And we're asking you, we're imploring you to please stand up and do the right thing. And I'm, again, happy to have these lawsuits passed out. My information is on there. Please contact us with whatever you can and have us help with whatever we can.
Thank you. I would like to pass Denise Kamuca.
Hi, my name is Mike Moran. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I've been an electrician for 46 years. 26 years I've been working for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers as a representative, talking to men and women in the electrical trade. So many workers from United Electric came to us talking about the injustices that were taking place in their workplace, right? Many of which you heard a little bit about from Richard Mack today. In 46 years in the electrical industry, I've never ever heard of any treatment of workers like this. And again, this is the 21st century, right? It's 2022. This is in 1822. It's really, really disturbing as a white person that any worker would have to go through this. I've been told, I've been trying to do my due diligence in talking with the district is to find out the rubber's, the relationship that United Electric has, why they're doing the work in your district. What little I've been able to find out is Moss Communication is putting projectors, I believe in maybe 700 of your school classrooms, and United Electric is doing the powering of those projectors. So they're working in multiple schools, one of which is MLK, which I find really hard to even talk about, right? So anyway, as a, as a representative of the IVW and just as a person and resident of Michigan, I'm just here seeking justice for the United Six. So thank you.
May I leave these somewhere?
Sure, we can take them. Next three.
We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jacqueline Alimpic. I apologize if I messed up the last name. Maya Barnes and Leah Walton.
Those three can have a seat at the table. Ms. Grant is going to call the next three down so you can come right down to the front so we can try to expedite the transition period as well.
So the next three would be Emily O'Brien, Ella Carr, and Charlie Roper.
My name is Jacqueline Alimpic, and I am here today to address a few issues we are currently having at Southwest Elementary. Our first, the first issue that I would like to address is our HVAC system has not been working properly, and this started in the 2021, 2022 school year. We have discussed it with many people, followed correct communication chain, and we have been told that it was fixed. However, in the last two weeks, we have had seven classroom temps over 78 degrees with some in the 90s. And then also, our CO2 levels are unacceptably high. In 20 of our 40 classrooms, they are over 1,500 parts per million. And when the concerns about our CO2 levels have been brought up, they have been dismissed. The second issue, our classrooms are not being cleaned. We have, about a month ago, we had a meeting with Dr. Gonnell and a few other members of the staff, and we did discuss it, and we were assured that it would change and that our classrooms would start getting cleaned, but they are still not. I did get a note from a teacher today saying that it was discussed at the board meeting, and Principal Frost did contact someone at the district, and they assured us that it would be getting cleaned. But our third floor is still really, like, trash doesn't get taken out ever unless the teachers do it. So we were hoping for some other solutions. We had talked to Dr. Gonnell about maybe parents volunteering to clean classrooms, or maybe if there's some way we can have teachers paid to clean their classrooms for the extra hours that they're due spending to make sure that their classrooms are cleaned. Third, we need, and I'm sure that this is not just our school, interventionists. We are struggling. We don't have any in our school, so any kids that are falling behind or ahead are not getting any additional help. And I talked to a teacher and she had a really great solution, what I thought was a really great solution. We had a lot of SRF funds that, and we know that we can't hire interventionists with SRF funds, but what if we contracted some teachers, some retired teachers, to come in and do some interventions for, well, to bridge the gap while we find a more permanent solution for this issue? And then finally, we have a wonderful park adjacent to our school. I know that Dr. Roby has talked to the somebody about it, and I know Dr. Gonnell has also talked to somebody about it, and we have been told no across the board. We, but I think it's a policy change. The teachers would like to use the park as a classroom. However, in order for them to do that, they have to have permission slips filled out as though it is a field trip. And we would just like to find a way that we could make it into a waiver so that teachers can send it out at the beginning of the school year, and then they can use it when they want weather-dependent and less independent instead of having to send a field trip permission slip form out every time. Thank you.
Good evening. Before you start the clock, I have a question. I submitted a card on behalf of another parent that couldn't be here tonight, and if I could, sure, card is listed in there. If it'd be okay if I could do both my comment and her comment at the same time?
I'm sorry. I can only do that for his present. Oh, okay. All right.
So my son was a student, I'm here, good evening, sorry. Mike, good evening. I'm here to talk about Mr. Riscalla's abrupt removal from Blandford School. My son was a student at Blandford School into 2018, 19 school year. Even several years later, that remains the most impactful year of his education. That was due to the hard work of Mr. Riz as well as Ms. Mick. Every challenging moment of his time there was wonderful for him. For this reason, my family is deeply saddened to learn about Mr. Riscalla's departure and concerned about what this says about the future of education there at Blandford School. Mr. Riscalla is one of a kind, and what he conveys to students is not easily replaceable, even by strong teachers who come after him. My husband and I saw our son grow and flourish at Blandford. Not only did he grow as a student and flourish as an independent person, but his father and I, both of us who work in education, even learned something important about what we want for our son's future education from here on out. We credit both his flourishing and our own better understanding to this unique environment at Blandford, largely shaped and executed by Mr. Riscalla. We sent him to Blandford because it is a different environment with a different atmosphere and challenging teachers. That different environment was created through hard work and self-sacrifice by Mr. Riz, who, like a great coach and influential music teacher, challenged our son and made him stronger. Without that effort from Mr. Riz, Blandford will be much more like any other standard middle school, which is to say, much less special. And I don't think that I overstate the case to say even less magical. We are left at the current state to take small comfort from the fact that our son got to, to attend Blandford in what I fear might be a previous era where transformative educational experiences occurred. Blandford teachers, like Mr. Riz, made that possible for the students and for which we are deeply grateful. Thank you. And again, I cannot read for this person. Okay. Thank you.
You do refrain from clapping, cheering, or making audible comments. We have, we want to respect everyone's time and their effort to be here to share with us tonight. So if we can move this along and 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 allow each person to be heard. Ms. Wilson? What, Walton, Ms. Walton?
Thank you. Hi, I am Leah Walton, and I am a current parent of the Blandford School. Well, here to talk about the same topic. So for anyone that doesn't know, Riz is one of the two teachers at Blandford, and he was involuntary reassigned on Friday. So. Sorry. So that's a little bit about this scenario. And you will most likely hear tonight about what a great teacher and great person he is. And my scholars had a great experience at Blandford as well so far. Even though we are a, just a couple of months into it, I've seen tremendous growth with her. About this weekend, I was contacted by several past and current Blandford parents that were sharing stories how their scholars had been publicly ridiculed, shamed, and humiliated by Riz. Many of them are nervous to publicly share their feelings as this response, the response from the community has also been a little demeaning, blaming parents and their scholars for not being able to handle the program and stating they're not tough enough. Maybe their kids should leave. So as you can imagine, it's hard for them to be here to to share their thoughts. It made me realize that I wanted to speak up to remind people that all scholars deserve a safe place to go to school, not just our own children. I don't know why the focus has been on judging the scholars and their parents. People then have reached out to me knowing that I've been told the stories, you know, asking, trying to figure out if they're a good kid or the bad kid, almost like if they deserved the behavior, and really interrogating me about who the kids are and what the situation is instead of focusing on the behavior of the adult and the impact that it has on this The clock is not going. I'm, I've started the timer here. All right. Sorry. What time am I at?
You have a little over a minute left.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. All right. So also, not one parent that I've spoken with has said that he is a bad person or a bad guy, so you'll repetitively hear today that he's a great guy, and those people would say so too, and he's also contributing to an psychologically safe environment for children. The demands and the rigor of the program don't come from, from being embarrassed publicly. We all know that Blandford's a tough program. We signed up for it. We're here for it. Tough love and shame are not the same. I don't know why his behavior is being equated to part of the program when they are two different things. This can be a hard program without being put down. As a parent, I know I'm not privy to inside info and out of professional respect for Riz and to also safeguard the scholars who have expressed concern, I won't ask for his file to be shared. It is not appropriate. But I do trust when the decisions like this are made, it's because the district has done its due diligence in assuring that it's the right move for everyone. The focus should be on ensuring a smooth transition so that kids continue to have a year of learning and growth. Again, it's not safe for others to speak up in a situation like this because of the unpopular opinion and the retaliation that they'll experience. But again, they would agree that Riz is a great guy too, and I would just ask that you support the small school with the transition as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call six names. The first three will join us up. Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm going to call three more. Nora Brenner, Amy Brower, and Willow West.
And then we have Emily, Ella, and Charlie, correct? All righty.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Roby and other members of the board. My name is Charles Roper. I was a student at Blandford School from the 2018 to 2019 school year, and I would have to say it was one of the best years of my life. Doctor, I mean, Mr. Riz was not just a teacher to me. I'm going to try and go through this without crying because that's how much it means to me, but Mr. Riz was more than just a teacher to me. He was more of like a parent. Everyone at my school, including me, we all felt like we were a family, and I would think that many students today continue to feel as if Blandford is one big family. And this is coming from a student who is showing up to the Franklin Campus at a Monday on 7 o'clock in front of the school board to talk about a teacher, which I would never do to anyone in my entire life except for Mr. Riz because that's how much he meant to me. He was like a father to me, and it's disheartening to hear of his termination last Friday. The second I heard about it, I want to do anything, everything possible to make sure that he continued his role as a teacher at Blandford. He did so much for me, and that is coming from a student who had many important and very serious talks with him. And I just have to say that he was one of the best people I've ever met in my entire life. And yeah, that's all I guess I have to say.
Thank you so much.
My name is Ella Carr, and I am a lifelong GRPS student. I graduated from City High in 2021, but, and I went to Blandford in 2012 and 2014, 2013. And Mr. Riscalla is one of the professors who has had the greatest impact on my entire education in GRPS. The, that, the connection that I made with him and the other teacher and the school itself has encouraged me to come back and volunteer at Blandford and among other GRPS events up to this year. I, this year, have spent time volunteering as a lifeguard on a trip with, with the Blandford sixth-grade students. So I have seen Riz grow as a teacher from his first year of teaching when I was a student in the sixth-grade Blandford program to now. I have seen him grow as a teacher, and I loved him when I was in sixth grade, and I still love him now. I think that he is an absolutely vital part of the Blandford program, and removing him, especially a few months into the year, would disrupt not only the students' learning but the program itself. Losing him, the, his loss would be detrimental to the program. He is the one there, the teacher there with the most experience, and he, it means so much to so many students and really to the program itself. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily O'Brien, and I am also a past Blandford student. Although, excuse me, I did not have the pleasure of having him as my teacher, but I still came back as a camp counselor, spring camp. So that's an entire week of being out camping, backpacking with the teachers, with all of these students, and also the weeks leading up to camp where they are preparing, and in the weeks after where unpacking. So I feel that as a counselor who didn't have Mr. Riz as my teacher, I feel that I got a unique perspective as neither his student or his parent into how his teaching affected the school and its program. And I truly believe that, again, agreeing with Ella, it is detrimental to the program that he was removed. When I look at Mr. Riz, I see a teacher that cares about his students. He pushes them to succeed. He pushes them to challenge themselves and to grow not only as students, but also as people. I did see my little brother go to school as his teacher, and I watched him go to school every day and come back. And every single day, he's growing more and more, and he's talking about how great Mr. Riz is and how he's pushing him to grow as a person. And sorry, public speaking, not my strong suit, but even, even though it's not, I still feel that I needed to come up here and say to you that he's really great because Blandford, yes, you'll hear a ton of people say today that it is a rigorous program, but not only for the students, it also demands so much more of its teachers. I mean, even outside of school hours, going in and volunteering, I'm seeing him before school and after school. And we're talking before and after school, and I know that he's thinking and working on this program outside of school hours at home too. And I think that just goes to show how much he cares for this program. And again, admittedly, he was not my teacher, so I can't entirely speak on how students might feel about it. But I do think that him being so abruptly removed wasn't the only option that could have been considered. And I think that for such a unique teacher and such a unique program, that maybe we needed to consider some other unique solutions to the problem. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll also call Mara Nastelli, Chris Stroud, and Fanfan Weiner.
And as you ladies begin to speak, please say your name first as well.
My name is Willow West. I am a current Blandford student. And I have, I also want to address the Riz being removed. Riz is an awesome teacher, and he was treated unfairly. Riz got moved to a different school. Every grade level has a tough-love teacher and a super caring one. Riz may have been the tough-love one, but that is, that help, that is what helps us grow. Blandford is a, is a school of hard-working and, and a school, a school of hard-working students and family. The Beeps help us help each other and encourage each other. At Blandford, we work hard, but then we play hard. We spend a lot of time working, but then we have a lot of fun playing because we earned that. Riz helped me learn that. Riz helped us Beeps learn that. At Blandford, we have a lot of fun with projects, learning, and at home. But, but we first have to get our work done. At Blandford, learning is fun. We learn a lot, and we like it a lot. Riz helped make learning fun. He taught us well, and he made it fun. Riz should have never been moved. He belongs at Blandford.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nora Brenner, and I'm a current student at Blandford School. As you know, our teacher, Riz, has been moved to museum school, and I believe that you could have at least given us more of a warning and possibly found a way not to move him. I don't believe that it was right for anybody involved with Blandford. He was a very nice teacher, although, as Willow said, he was definitely the tough-love one. He's a great teacher, and he loves the Blandford program. He taught at our school for nine years, and the alumni love him. He believes in keeping the Blandford tradition alive and turning us into the Blandford family we become. I, I think it was not right for, for Riz to be moved. And yeah, it would be great to have him back.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time today, and thank you all for your service on the board. And I can't start without saying, just, you guys are so impressive, and thank you for your words today. My name is Amy Brower. I'm the parent of two children in GRPS, one of which is a current sixth grader at Blandford School, one who is a high schooler and a Blandford alum. As you've heard, parents received notification on Friday that Mr. Riscalla, or Riz, was, would be moved to, there'd be a staffing change at Blandford, and he'd be moved to a new school. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern about that decision and frankly sadness, and both about the decision and the process that, that was followed in terms of the communication of that decision. I am sad to hear over the last several days that there are some children who have not had, who have indicated that they've not had a positive experience at Blandford, but I can only share tonight about our family's experience with Blandford and with Riz. And that's been a largely positive one. What we've experienced with Riz is, yes, an intense personality, a lot of fun, but also a deep consideration for the kids and an extremely dedicated spirit to his profession. And I'll never forget our first conference in the fall with Riz, with my son. I was surprised. It was not what I expected. My son was extremely nervous because he came from a school that didn't have any homework in fifth grade, so he was very aware he's going to have to work really hard to stay up, caught up with everything. You know, we exchanged a little bit in the conference, and then Riz looked at him and said, "Dude, you just made it through the first marking period with great grades. Now go make some friends." And that to me showed that he's an educator who looks at the whole child. So, and I don't know what my time is because the clock isn't going, but I do have a couple of things I did want to say that was compelled to come here. And I asked, like whoever said, I'm, public speaking is not my favorite thing, so I'll get through it quickly. The email notification was not consistently delivered to all parents because, I know because I never actually received it, and I'm definitely on the school email list. Also, the language on the notification made it, wasn't clear that this was a forced move. And so many of the children initially assumed that Riz was choosing to leave them, and that was not the case. This, the way this was done created a situation in which the children could not say goodbye to their teacher, and were not able to have any closure with that process. I also want to ask the district to absolutely make sure that they are supporting Mr. Tex and whoever the next teacher or parent pro will be. This is an enormous job for anybody, let alone one person. And Tex is proven to be an excellent teacher, but it's a lot, and there's a lot more projects that are coming forward. And so I would ask that the district would be checking in with them, asking what kind of support they need, and being willing to provide that support so that our kids can continue and have a wonderful rest of the year. And then I, last-
Sorry, I know that we are over three minutes, so, but thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
My name's, uh-
One moment before we start, we're going to call the next three people down, and then we are going to begin with you and make sure the timer is set.
Okay, so we have Eric Doyle, Ben Sheed, and Alari Sanders.
Chris, you're welcome to start.
My name is Chris Strand. I have two Beep alumnis, my daughter Meg and my daughter Abby. We talked in the beginning of the meeting, I heard the phrase scholar focus. We're focused on our scholars at GRPS. I think that's true. And I think it's what we want for all of our kids as parents and educators. And I think we're doing our current and future Blandford Beeps a disservice by removing Riz from Blandford. Blandford is hard. It's not for everyone. The workload is intense, and Riz is tough. But they can do it. Sixty Beeps graduate from Blandford every year. My 18-year-old is a Blandford alumnus and now a freshman at the University of Michigan. She was a City High grad. Dr. Robey, you spoke at her graduation in the spring. She was the one in the blue robe. But she told me in her first year as an engineering student in aeronautical engineering, she said, "Boy, Dad, it's really tough here. It's hard. It's harder than City." But she said, "It's not as hard as Blandford. I know how to work hard because I went to Blandford." And I spent a lot of time at Blandford. I'm an airline pilot, so I have a lot of days off during the week. And I would spend time there fixing things that Riz would ask me to fix or working with the students. I went to Camp Roger and Chaperone there. I spent a lot of time watching Riz. And what some parents might call shaming is just Riz being tough, giving a kid tough love about a kid who's falling behind. Riz does not want any kid to fall behind. So I just think it's a mistake to remove a teacher. And apparently, the policy is then if you feel like a teacher is too shaming to students, you move him from one school to another. That doesn't make any sense. Keep him at Blandford. If there needs to be some remediation with some counseling and say, "Hey, Riz, maybe don't use this phrase, use that phrase," you know, I'm sure he'd be willing to take that onboard. But Riz is a unique individual. He's kind of an outdoorsman. He works seven days a week for Blandford. You know, I would go in on the weekends to do chicken chores with my kids, and we would call Riz to tell him, "Hey, the chicken chores are done." I mean, what teacher in GRPS takes a call on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. from a, from a student to tell him that, you know, the chickens have been fed? And same thing on Sunday. So please reconsider this, what I think is a terrible move for the future of Blandford School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing? Good evening. Thanks for your time. I'm here also want to talk about my feelings of Mr. Riz's removal. I overheard this news last Friday, and I have several concerns. First one, my understanding is Mr. Riz didn't find out after their students found this news. So what, what had to make me wonder, what support does this, does GRPS have given to Mr. Riz? If we have some concerns, do we have any development plans to help him to grow out whatever complaints you have heard? What can make this decision happen? The second concern is, this decision is happening in the middle of the school year. We all understand how important a consistent education environment for a student, especially sixth graders. Did you understand like how many heartbroken kids are crying at home after they heard about that? And third, I want to talk about Blandford itself. I think you already heard enough. It's not designed for everyone. It's supposed to have a very tough request, interest requirement for our students to come in. My understanding, it used to have like 75 percentile test score to get into Blandford. It's a very hard program to get in. And it's supposed to prepare our students to face challenges, to learn how to solve problems. It's not an easy program. It's not for everyone. So my understanding is the school, GRPS lowered the entrance requirement for Blandford several years ago, from 75 percentile to 50 percentile. I didn't think that's the right decision either. The fourth, I want to talk about Mr. Riz. So I'm a parent of two former Blandford students as well, and they both only had very positive words describe Mr. Riz. And same as Chris, I've been volunteering at Blandford many times and had lots of conversations with Mr. Riz. My, I understand how much time, how many hours he has poured into this program. Yes, Mr. Riz may be a little loud, maybe a little tough, but that never has any meaning, mean purpose towards any students. And you can see many Blandford students are here on a Monday night, or some of them even, you know, brave enough coming here to talk about their feelings towards Mr. Riz. I think you understand that. And we have one parent support the removal. She also said this is an overwhelming, unpopular decision. So I'm here to, just to ask you to reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm speaking to express my concerns over the abrupt removal of Mr. Riscalla from Blandford School. My son is currently enrolled at Blandford. When we told him that Monday would be his last day, my son went to his room and cried. As a student in Riz's classroom, my son has flourished in ways I didn't think possible. He has ignited in my son monumental effort, despite his own challenges, to dig deep and take it further. My son's work has gone far beyond what he thought he could accomplish. The most valuable thing an education can do is show a kid that they can do things that they didn't think were possible. That's how growth and transformation happen. That's how we do hard things. I have been so impressed with the well-considered curriculum and calendar at Blandford. Yes, it is difficult, but I don't think it's an accident that on the days that they have huge projects due, they are also memorizing, "Don't worry about a thing because every little thing's going to be all right." I attribute this care and consideration to Riz and his deep well of invaluable and irreplaceable experience. What the kids experience in that juxtaposition is that they have the inner resource to preserve. Yes, Blandford is challenging. I can see how Riz may be intimidating, how the demands of the program combined with the tough exterior might be hard for some kids. But that doesn't mean he should be removed. It means those kids should be supported as they move through their own feelings and discover that they can get through this. If Riz is unreasonably short-tempered because he, like every other teacher right now, is trying to do a lot with very little, then we need to get more support for Riz and Tex. Our children's generation is going to be facing unprecedented challenges for which there is no blueprint. We need teachers like Riz more than ever. We need to support our kids at home through tough moments. There will be more tough moments. Removal of a teacher sends the wrong message to everyone, that we can make the problem, the bad feelings, the person we don't like or are afraid of, the struggle to go away. Instead, we should be supporting each other through our conflicts, working through difficult feelings, staying with each other so we can get to the other side together. It's what we have to do as human beings. It's what we should be modeling as an entire community, our school, parents, and administration, to our kids. Great teachers push us beyond what we think is possible and then see us through to the other side. That is the most we can hope for our children. Riz is that kind of teacher. I have never had as much confidence in a teaching team as I do in Riz and Tex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also have Nicole Souls join us?
And if you remember to, please state your name first, and then we'll start the class.
Hi, my name is Alari Sanders, and I am a current student of Riz. I'm here to speak about how I think that moving him to a different school is not the best decision on your guys' part. I believe that he is a hard teacher, and I told him that on the second day of school. I told him that I was nervous because I knew that he was going to be difficult on all of us. But he told me that he is a good teacher, and I believe that, and I believe that he is a fun teacher, but also, when it comes to it, he has to be tough on us because we go to a themed school, and sometimes we have to know when is the right time to play around and have a good time, and when is the time to be serious about things, and when is the time to know that you need your work to be done. And I feel like he always gave us that. So, and he always told us that we needed to be big boys and big girls because we are sixth graders. And it is definitely tough love that he's said things to us, but I believe that he was challenging us in the best way possible. And when I heard about the news on Friday, I ran to my room and cried because I always felt that he, I've only been with him for about three months, and I feel that he has made me such a better student because in fifth grade, I wasn't really challenged, and I didn't have any homework. So I knew that if I was going to keep up with this program, I knew I would have to be able- So I knew that if I was gonna keep up with this program, I knew I would have to be able to keep myself accountable. And I also feel like he kept me accountable. And everyone says that Blandford is a big family, and I feel that by removing him, a piece of our family will always be missing. That's all.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Scheid. That's how you pronounce it.
Thank you.
My voice sounds like this because our Ottawa Hills Women Swim Dive Team also is doing pretty well. This sounds a lot better than last year, actually. So I could do this for probably twenty minutes. I'm gonna do my best here. I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I am a local artist. You will be getting my, and I work with the Grand Rapids Arts Festival. I'm glad to see that your kids want art. You'll be hearing from me in the future. Several of the students that you have for GRPS volunteer for me at festival right now. You can see these, how beautiful students we have in Grand Rapids, okay? I went to Brookside Elementary. I went to Iroquois Middle. I went to Ottawa Hills High School. I almost own my home that's in that neighborhood. I'm here. I'm invested. I volunteer because these kids are worth it. This administration of this school district requires parents like me, requires parents like the woman from Southwest, because it is abhorrently bad. Matthew Barrisford, this is strike three for my child. My eleven-year-old was at North Park when there was an asbestos breach. I say breach. There was open asbestos work around our kids and our teachers for six months, right? Upon learning this and realizing how much it was covered up, we formed a parent group because we were so upset about the way that we were misled. The next strike, he doesn't even know about because of the way that the response was about that problem, okay? My child was assaulted on the playground. I would call it sexually assaulted. The administrator that Matthew Barrisford administrated told my child in a rash way that that kid comes from a bad house. We need to take care of him. I understand what she meant by that because I'm a grown-up, because I take care of the kids in my neighborhood, okay? We didn't think it was worth it. That administrator no longer is in our district. That administrator made a choice to instead of have an advocate for our school, she chose a teacher that forced us to leave that school. That's how bad it was. Parents are always going to be loud. You're always gonna have that. The same parents are gonna go to the principal's office and have secret meetings at their elementary school, the high school, all of them. That's what it means by understanding the track record. It is the administration's job to do that. Matthew Barrisford has affected my child's entire education negatively. When is he going to be called to account? And by the way, RIS has given me the courage to change my career to work with kids. RIS has given me the understanding that my house was not as clean as I thought it was. And looking in that mirror was really hard, but we support these kids. I'm sorry, my time is done. There's a lot of failure to discuss. I cannot tell you how much I support RIS and that program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Doyle. Thank you for having me here to speak on the topic of RIS as a lot of other people have been speaking to. Blandford is one of the best schools in this district, hands down. And I'm upset. I'm angry at what has happened. I learned this flying home last Friday from California through a text message, which I think is kind of the same way that he learned about this too, and a lot of parents learned about that through an email. And it didn't even make it to everybody. How can we communicate something so impactful to the families of this school in that way? We need to do better than that. So one of the things that I'm asking for is a community discussion soon. Not in a month from now, like Matthew had suggested, but soon, so that we can get together and figure this out. This school started with a family sit-down. Very early on in the school year, they talked about how we needed to get close, we needed to work with each other, and sort through the issues that we had. They got all the kids together and sat them uncomfortably on the floor for a long period of time because they were gonna be spending a lot of time together. And I've witnessed some of that time together. I was there at fall camp a week or two ago, or a couple of weeks ago, as a volunteer to go through the scavenger hunt that we did and also to pull zombie duty overnight to help care for the kids. What I saw there, I think, is maybe an example of some of the tough love that we have been hearing about, where RIS called out a couple of students because they were not listening. They were talking to each other and not paying attention. He called them out by name. And he also said to the other students, "I may call you out in the future" because it was important for them to listen to the instructions that were going on that night for their safety. They're running out in the middle of a camp in the dark. They needed to be safe. They needed to hear all of those things. He stopped the conversation to make sure that everybody was listening. If you call that tough love, then I'll take it because I want my kids to be safe. He's concerned about them. So this is a really challenging and demanding school. We expect that. There's gonna be some hard feelings, and I'm sorry for the children that have experienced that. I've come through that experience with my own child, too. So a couple of things I'm asking for you. Please review all of the communications that happened about this, the timing of that, who they went to, who knew what when, and also the accuracy of the information that was presented, because I think that there are some problems in that communication. And if the misconduct was so extreme that you had to remove him with one day's notice and move him to another school, what is that? I don't get that. I really don't. So please, look into this. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Nikki Souls, and I wasn't intending to speak tonight. I don't have a current BEEP, so I feel a little disconnected from the current situation. But I did have a BEEP last year, and what a year. She was already super great and awesome, but she grew by like leaps and bounds with the curriculum that Techs and RIS and Grandpa implemented, and in their special way. I could definitely go on and on and on about all the great things and piggyback off of what so many people have already said. But a few points that I want to highlight that I think can be maybe handled quite a bit better is the scenario of a vague email coming out on a Friday about RIS's departure or transfer or whatever was not unlike what we experienced in the spring when there was a concern about conduct with RIS. And suddenly, he just didn't exist at Blandford anymore, and it was like two weeks before school was done. And our children were left wondering, "What's going on? Is he coming back? Oh, no, he's not." And then they didn't have a chance to say goodbye. And that was very, very unsettling and provided no closure. And yet again, these families and these students and staff are faced with that same scenario. "Oh, hey, it's Friday afternoon. Just gonna let you know this," like life-changing scenario. "Can't really talk about it. Can't really understand why or get any details, but you're just gonna have to accept it." And that's not okay. Like, I think we, I understand privacy for the students who are having concerns, and I understand privacy for RIS as a professional. But as the parents trying to understand what the plan is from the administrators and understand what our children are going through so we can support them, we need more transparency. And we need a dialogue. Like, this is not standing up here and like preaching to you is not my strong suit. It's more of a give and take, and what is it that you know on your side? And all we're hearing is grumblings on social media, and it's all hearsay. And then it just creates this tension, and that's not valuable. And so if these actions were so terrible for RIS to commit, or words, or whatever, then why is it okay for him to continue teaching at another school with other children? Why wouldn't he do the same thing, you know? And if it's simply because Blandford is a rigorous program, and he was stretched thin, and it's just been escalating semester after semester, and this has been ongoing last spring and the year before and whatever, why wasn't he given the support he needed? Why weren't there more people in the school for him to have those students be dealt with by them so he could focus on being his best self in the classroom?
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will conclude our public comment, and we'll go to the superintendent comments.
So I didn't have many comments. I wanted to, certainly I was going to lift up our three scholars who were acknowledged, but I know that we did that earlier. And so again, congratulations to Benny, Ben, and Ben?
Ben.
Ben, excuse me, Benner Anderson, Liam Walters, and Selma Anderson for representing our district and Ottawa Hills High School. And Benner is a D1 champion, so these shirts, I think we can actually buy them. So if you want to support these young people, please do so. We are very, very proud of our young people.
And for comments, we'll start with Ms. Davis.
All right. I just want to thank everyone for your public comment. It's so important, and especially our students, thanks for being brave and coming up here and articulating your thoughts and feelings. I also just want to thank everybody who's already filled out a ballot and to encourage those of you who are voting tomorrow to make sure you do that and have a plan of what time and where you're supposed to go and be ready to do that. And thank you in advance.
Yeah, I think I'd like to echo those comments, too. I think it takes a great amount of courage for parents and especially our scholars. You're awesome. Very impressed. Whether you win or lose in the argument about what a good teacher is, as a former teacher, I know that tough love is very necessary. And so I was hearing you, and I want you to know that. I believe we hear you as a group. And whatever decisions are made, you know, I know that it has to be for the best of our students. We're a city that cares, and education is a tough business. It is very difficult to go every day and deal with multiple personalities and somehow navigate them and inspire them and then correct them and get their best behavior. And the next day, forgive them and love them just as if it never happened. And I know I've been there, done that. So I hope that our decisions are good, that they come out the best for everybody involved.
Ms. Shaki, please. No disruption from the audience, please. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, I too just want to recognize and express my gratitude for public comment this evening, lifting up our scholars in particular. That is such an important piece of our strategic plan is your voice and agency in the decisions we make, and so I just thank you for your courage and bravery. I also, as a parent of an athlete, will lift up our Ottawa Hills Bengals volleyball team, proud mom. They didn't quite have the record that perhaps some of the other sports did. That's okay. But I was at the banquet and was able to sit and listen to the growth of our program, which was exceptional. And to celebrate a donation, a $5,000 donation that was given to that program so that our girls could be like the other schools, you know, and have their posters on the wall. And I was just so proud to be in the stands this year to root for our Bengals. So it's an honor to be a parent in GRPS.
Thank you, Ms. Shaki. And Reverend Matthias.
Yeah, again, as my fellow board members have been stating, it is, it's an honor to serve, and certainly we all want you to vote. It is painful to hear. All of us here are humans, and we care. We're in the agency of preparing you all for the future in the present. And so as it has been stated, we hope that decisions that come out of our administration and us as a board to our superintendent, that we are just in those decisions. So appreciate the comments that have been made and the emotions that were expressed. Appreciate certainly the leaps and bounds that our sports teams are doing. Looking forward to the turkey trot. Many decisions about some other things that are coming up in our future. And again, those are things that as a board, we have to win. As a community, we have to vote on. So we appreciate your support in those things. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming this evening and expressing your concerns. I too, I listened, and I am a former teacher, and I know how it goes with tough love and being a hard teacher. I don't know the teacher involved, but I support whatever decision the administration makes concerning this situation.
Ms. Grant.
All right. I just first want to speak about the first group that we had for public comment, who was speaking about the potential third-party relationship that we would have with a vendor that may be infringing upon civil rights. To my knowledge from previous conversations today, we are not directly giving our dollars to anyone that is involved with that. And I just wanted to be clear. I don't know how clear that was, so I want to make sure. But someone that they subcontract is someone that we apparently subcontract. And although this is not an incident that we're directly involved in, I would love to have an ongoing conversation with my colleagues because I think it presents a good conversation about what is our policy. I know, I think I could say pretty much where we all stand, but I don't know that we have something written in black and white that will exist beyond us. So I would love to have some conversation about what policy that we can put in place about vendors who may be violating civil rights and what that means for us doing business with them. So I did want to speak to that. And then also, just as everyone else has stated, I want to thank everyone for coming and sharing. And this is a perfect example about how we advocate for ourselves and the work of, things aren't always black and white. There are some students who are really hurting with the loss of a teacher, and I absolutely sympathize. And there may be some other people who are also going through something. And so I think it's that situation where we want to make sure that everyone is served well. And I appreciate people who came to speak on both sides. Thank you for sharing. And acknowledging that our schools aren't a place where we say, "Maybe you don't belong here." But we can make it a place where it is a program for everyone who's in the building, and we can work together. And that might not be a popular statement to make, but I did want to say that because I have been a part of programs that are extremely rigorous and been told, "Maybe it's just too hard for you. Maybe you shouldn't be here." And I know what that feels like as well. So my heart goes out to both sides, and I thank everyone for coming to speak to both of those sides as well. Thank you.
Well, I will concur with both of your comments, Ms. Grant. I appreciate those people who traveled across the state to share with us some information with regards to a vendor subcontract situation that may have some impact in one of our schools. And not sure if we know that information, but definitely looking forward to learning more. With regards to our students, thank you so much for sharing. We know it's difficult to come up here and look at all of us. I know we're not the most beautiful bunch, but we are listening, and we appreciate you taking the time to share with us. And then ultimately, no this, no this, guys. You guys are beautiful, but, you know. And we appreciate you challenging us about our processes. We can always improve processes, and I'm not sure if there was any type of deficiency. But I'm sure our superintendent and her staff will do their best to try to address anything that was a deficiency. that was a deficient in that process of communication. But I really do want to uplift the comment Ms. Grant made about students not belonging. And I think one of the things that we have learned is that it's important for us to make a safe place for all students. And that is our primary function, is to make sure that they're educated and they feel safe when they come into our facilities. And that's for all students, all scholars. And so I wanted to leave everyone with that as well. I understand there's been, you may have a personal feeling about a particular someone, and I ask that we try to respect others' opinion about those someones as well. Again, welcoming space for all students. So thank you so much for your time and sharing with us tonight. We appreciate it. And if you have additional questions, I'm sure we have some staff and cabinet members that may be able to give you a business card if you need to schedule any additional meetings or concerns around that. Thank you so much, and this meeting is adjourned.